With Saban. Are we recording this? Anybody but Bama. That's kind of like, that's my shirt. Yes, anybody but Bama. Okay. That's all right. I'm going to just keep talking. The longer they talk, the longer we're going to be here, right? All right. The time is 6:01 PM. This meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We're going to get out of here as quickly as we can. There's football going on.
Is LSU playing in there?
No. They're not. If they were, I would not be here. No. They're not. But I'd like to watch Alabama get beat, so. That's okay. I can take it. I'm a big girl. You win some, you lose some. Okay, we are not going to convene in closed session right now. We're going to try to push through some of this agenda and then take closed session, if that's okay with all of my fellow trustees. So, we're going to start with 5A on the agenda. Review of the minutes. And do any of the trustees have questions on the minutes? Next up is going to be B1. We're going to look at a little bit of policy. No, it's not the policy first.
Policy first.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, there it is. It's A2. I skipped right on over it. A2, so let's start, I'm going to group the policy together. A, B, C, and D. We have CAA local on financial ethics, CB local, state and federal revenue, CDC local, grants from private sources, and CH local, purchasing and acquisition. I know that, I think Mrs. James has a couple of questions or at least comments on this because we have a new updated policy in front of us on CH local. So, Mrs. James, do you want to give us a brief update?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mrs. Tossein. So, these are the four policies that, I think it's four, yes, that the policy committee was working on this last month, which was a pretty abbreviated month because we were on holiday for a couple of weeks of it. But we managed to bring them, get all of them together, and I think they're all in good shape. I'd like to comment a little bit on CH local, which we did a kind of a last-minute revision to. And we have a revision at our places, so at the very back of the pile of paper you And the reason for this revision, it kind of goes between pages two and three, so it's really inconvenient. Whoops, page three isn't even, page two isn't even there.
Page two isn't there.
Well, we have it, but it's just not in her graphic. But anyway, the bottom line is that we wanted to be sure that the items that were brought up in the internal audit on purchasing and the items that were brought up in the curriculum audit were addressed in this policy. Because this is, I think, was one of the policies that was brought up as something that needed to be revised. And I can't recall exactly if it was because of the report to internal audit or if it was because of the report in the district audit. But CH local was on the list. So, through some last-minute adjustments, I think that we are covering the recommendations that were suggested by the auditors. But maybe I could ask, I don't know, Dr. Dupree or Mrs. Martinez, if we have verification of that or if we could look into that over the next week or so.
Yes, actually, we looked at the internal audit document today from the audit that was done in 2014. And the way it addresses it more than anything is it tightens up with a reference to the purchase order and procurement card because the audit addressed concerns about blanket POs and just the order of spending of doing POs before we actually commit the money. And what do we call those? Confirming POs.
Confirming.
So, really, this is, it tightens up the policy and it gives us more strength, if you will, as we address the audit finding.
Okay. So, you feel that the audit recommendation is being adequately addressed in this?
Well, it's not a direct, it's not a direct addressing of it, but it is aligned closely. And this gives us additional teeth, if you will, as we're enforcing what the auditors expect us to enforce.
Okay. And then the follow-up of the procedures would be where that would be more fully enumerated for the administration to follow up.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. So, I think, Mrs. Tossein, that's the main thing I wanted to bring up about this. And if there's, yeah, if anybody has any questions about these, I can help or address.
Thank you for that. We appreciate that. Appreciate the policy committee, as always, going through this stuff so diligently for the board. Do we have other questions from the board members? Mr. Rice?
I don't, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you, Mrs. James, for your hard work on that. I know we say if it doesn't exist in policy, it doesn't exist. And I'm really glad that you work on that because I do not want to work on it. But I do know how important it is, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rice. And I will say that Mr. Rosenthal, who's not here at the moment, works equally hard on it, so we are, and he's the one who said, if it's not in policy, it doesn't exist. So, we're a good team, so thank you for your support.
Yes, teamwork makes the dream work. We all pull our weight, so. Okay. Any other questions or comments on those policies? All right. And Mr. Rosenthal is on his way. In fact, I think I just heard him come in, so he should be here any minute. All right, let's look at A3, which is the proposed order of election to be conducted on May 5, 2018. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees on this item? Okay, next up is our proposed approval of the revised performance objective seven under Goal 1 in the district improvement plan. This is to align with the superintendent's evaluation that we approved last month. Do we have questions or comments on this item? Next up will be the calendar, the proposed district calendar for the 1819 school year. Do we have comments or questions on this item? Mrs. James? Did you want to?
I was going to say, we actually have just a brief present conversation about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, I want to provide a little journey for you or some background on the journey to provide the proposed calendar you have in front of you today. And it started with the board's approval of the District of Innovation back in March of 2017. And from that, a 38-member calendar committee was comprising members of the community, staff, and a representative from the Board of Trustees, Mr. KP George. We'd like to thank him for his contributions and participation in the process. Throughout the process, we included input or opportunities for input from student groups, from staff members, and from the community at large through a posting of an online survey regarding two calendar options, and that online survey ran in December. And so, as I said, this started with the board's approval of the local innovation plan in 2017. And this provided more flexibility because it took away the requirement, or we were able to waive the statutory requirement to begin on the Fourth Monday in August. And with that flexibility, we were able to take steps, the committee was able to take steps towards a more flexible calendar that really speaks to instruction for students. But we're still have some constraints and some requirements that we have to function within as we develop the proposed calendar. And that starts with House Bill 2442, which mandates that we have a minimum of 75,600 minutes. And TEA also is requiring a minimum of 840 additional operational minutes to be included in the calendar for such things as bad weather, et cetera. It's important to note that TEA defines these operational minutes as bell-to-bell. And for Fort Bend ISD, our bell-to-bell is 435 minutes. When TEA gives credit, if you will, or a waiver, it is for 420 minutes. It's also important to note that we are required to have a minimum 187-day teacher contract as a minimum. And of course, if we were to go over that 187 days, that has budget implications that we did not include in the proposed budget for the coming year. Also, new this year is there are no early waiver, excuse me, early release waivers allowed by TEA. So, in the past, we had early release, and we were able to waive that missed instructional time and count it, if you will, as our instructional time. And it also did not take away from then the teacher contract days and have us add more time in that way in trying to make up the instructional time. So, the proposed calendar that you have for consideration does include a total of 76,755 minutes with the staff development waiver, which accounts for 1,410 minutes. And that is not inclusive of all of the staff development for our teachers. That is to waive two instructional days for professional development, or 1,410 minutes for professional development. Teachers get very thorough and incredible professional development before school starts. This also includes, this calendar proposal includes 1,155 surplus minutes. So, we exceed the minimum requirement of 840, and this is the equivalent of 2.75 bad weather days, if it came down to that. So, through this developmental process of the calendar, the committee convened during the fall and reviewed calendar possibilities that had been drafted by members of a subcommittee from the local innovation committee as well as staff members. And they reviewed these drafts to then create two options that were presented to the public for public comment, December 7 through the 15. And then the final calendar committee meeting, the committee took the feedback from these calendar options and reviewed that extensively. And the feedback consisted of 4,800 responses to the survey questions. And in the survey, we were asking them to look at two calendar options, one and two, and then answer a third question related to the start date because the two posted calendars had a start date of mid-August, August 15, which was not only mid-month but also mid-week, which is different to what we've been doing in the past as the first day of the week, Fourth Monday of the month. Through the 4,800 responses, these included parents, guardians, staff members, teachers, principals, district employees, and campus employees who were not teachers, as well as community members who are not current parents in the system. And of the 4,800, 57% of those responding are parents or guardians of currently enrolled students. 8% were students, 25% teachers, 1% principals, 10% campus employees who are not teachers, 6% district employees, 2% community members, and 1% responding as other. And the feedback showed that 52% of those responding were in favor of option one, 18% being neutral towards option one, and 30% opposing. Calendar option two, the responses show that 49% were in favor, 18% neutral, and 33% opposed. So, you can see, very close. The feedback was extremely close. And with regard to the start date, 50% were in favor of the mid-week, Wednesday, August 15 start date, 50% in favor, 26% neutral, and 24% opposed. So, at the last calendar committee meeting, the members of the committee really dove deeply into the open-ended feedback because those numbers were so very close. And so, they reviewed both the quantitative and qualitative data to reach consensus to propose option one with the addition of two early release days in the fall and the spring semester during that exam week. We further reviewed, as a leadership team, the feedback from the committee as well as the overall feedback from the community and brought forward to you as a board the proposed calendar to include ending school prior to Memorial Day. And that was accomplished by removing two of the student and staff holidays that were on the calendar, one in October and one in February, and then allowing us to be able to end by Memorial Day. A lot of the feedback about the early start date included, if we're starting early in August, why are we still going past Memorial Day? And so, we were able to make that change into the calendar. And even with the addition of the two early release days and the lack of an early release waiver, we still fall within the requirement of the minimum number of 840 minutes for the bad weather time that TEA requires. So, some highlights of this calendar are that we maintain Fort Bend County Fair Day. We were able to maintain the week off at Thanksgiving. Students return on January 8 for the spring semester. Spring break is in alignment with most of the districts that have approved calendars or in the calendar planning process to the greatest extent we can find out at this point. We have a better balance in the semesters, and this increases the fall semester from 80 to 85 days and then decreases the spring semester from 94 to 90, so they're a little bit closer. Adds one day of student instruction for a total of 175 days while maintaining the 187-day teacher contract and allows school to end by May the 24th. Graduations to be completed by June the 1st. Of course, pending the board's action on this calendar, we would then begin the graduation planning based on availability and cost. It also includes at least one professional learning day or one holiday each month within the calendar. And it does provide the required 75,600 minutes as well as the required, meeting the requirements of the 840 minutes for emergency. And that's as fast as I can speak to get as much of the information in as I can. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. We appreciate all your work on this and for giving us that update. I believe the board has some questions. Ms. Helliger?
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation on the calendars. I just have, if this is the trend which we're going to go as a district, how does this impact our summer schools dates and are they moved up or they moved down? How do we look at the summer school as well? Because now we're actually, because normally it's like the last two weeks in June.
Normally, if we were guided by TEA's mandate, we would be beginning school on August 27 for students. And so, I'm going to turn to the curriculum folks and let them respond to how we're able to adjust that schedule.
Well, I think that we would plan with the new ending date in mind, but some of the pieces that drive summer school are also, when do we have all of the data from state assessments? Because there are summer school programs that are aligned with retesting and so forth and so on. So, we do some of our planning to coincide and to stagger some of those things, so there would be a number of things that we would need to take into account to appropriately plan. But I do think that we would consider looking at some of the similar dates in June that we would normally, but a lot of that, like I said, depends on when we have our state data available to us.
One thing I would add, having, since I can, some of us can remember back to before we had the mandate of start date. One thing it does for families, it does allow some families whose kids have to go to summer school. It allows them a week or so often to kind of get a breather in there before going straight from the last day of school right into summer, right into summer school. So, there is a little benefit for the students to have a little breather in there.
Okay.
May I add as well that some of the questions and feedback were around sports and fine arts and would the earlier start date require students then to, you know, impact band practice, for example, in the summertime? And both of the staff members were involved in the calendar committee and assured that there would be no change in that type of schedule, and it could easily be accommodated in terms of sports and UIL and fine arts as well. Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, ma'am. So, you addressed the other districts, so could you just maybe expand on that? What districts do you know that are looking at similar schedules? Because it affects a lot of, you know, parents that, you know, may have their kids here but work in other districts, things like that, so.
Yes, sir. So, prior to the break, and provided that a district didn't approve something last week, we had HISD and Lamar consolidated, whose calendars had been approved. And we have the same spring break as Lamar, being that March 11th spring break date. Their Christmas break or winter break is the same as ours, beginning on the 24th, and they're off the entire week of Thanksgiving as well. So, that coincides with HISD, their spring break is the same, March 11 through the 15th, Thanksgiving being the 19th through the 23rd, and their winter break begins the same on December the 24th.
Any other feedback from other districts that we know, like Aleve, Stafford?
Dr. Ledford is here, and she's been doing a lot of work with Region 4 and the calendar meetings that they've been having and discussions with other districts, so I'd invite Alice to be able to speak to that in more detail.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your questions. We have had a fantastic time pulling all of this together. To answer your question with regard to other districts, Region 4 had meetings throughout the fall and collected some data around what other districts are doing. And ours is within the same, with 25 to 30% of other districts are doing very similar things to ours. But remember, we're District of Innovation, so we are able to start a bit earlier than those districts that are not District of Innovation. So, we did look at the data from other districts as we put this forward.
I would add, Mr. Rosenthal, if I remember correctly, Katie actually started closer to the 14th or 15th this year. And that's one of the bigger districts that we, I would say, almost compete head-to-head with. And one of the, we've had conversations about how District of Innovation and these shifting schedules could ultimately impact recruiting and teacher retention. Because if teachers start realizing they're having to drive across districts and they want to start working where their kids are so that they're guaranteed the same schedule, we could feel the impact of that over time. But at this point, I'm not sure if Lamar is a District of Innovation or not. And they were not this year for sure, so that means they're going to be the last Monday in August. So, they're going to be the outlier with most other districts at this point, starting somewhere between the 15th and the 22nd in that area. So, that's a reality we're going to have to face. And so, we did try to make sure these key holidays are aligned because that's the most impacted. The reality is, we'll still have some families with kids starting sooner than, you know, moms starting or dads starting at a sync with their children.
Okay. And then the other thing, a couple of things. One, I kind of like the end date because it also aligns with students who may have older siblings that are getting home from college a lot earlier. So, I like that. The other thing, can you break down the staff, the results in the staff surveys as far as teacher support and concerns for some of these shifts?
Yes, sir. We absolutely can. And I'm going to be providing a follow-up to the board that will break down the open-ended comments as well as the data, and I'll show you exactly what each responding group, how they responded.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Tossein, and thank you. Oh. We need our little cardboard. My question has to do with graduation. So, if we're ending exams right there, the weekend, right before Memorial Day weekend, are we thinking that we would have graduation over the Memorial Day weekend? Or what's kind of the thinking around that?
That that is likely, the possibility. We would, of course, need to plan pending board approval based on availability and cost, what that would look like.
So, I guess that's, after we get the dates, the calendar in place, then you go back and think and try to find out what the, what the availability and what the cost would be? And then that comes back to us, I guess. Okay. All right. Thank you. And then my second question is, this item in the agenda refers to a staff development waiver, and I'm not clear what, I wasn't understanding what that was or what that entailed.
Okay. That is the 1,410 minutes that I was referring to. We have to file a waiver with TEA to be approved for the staff development like we used to with the early release days. We used to have several waivers that would accompany our calendar, but it's not a document that comes with it. It's an online process that we go through following your approval to do so. Then we put that forward with the information about the number of minutes that we're asking to waive in lieu of instruction for staff development purposes. Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. George?
Excuse me. I don't have any, I'm not going to get into the calendar specific. I just wanted to share my experience because this is the first time I'm serving on that committee, and I realize, I felt like I was sitting in a classroom at some times, and then I felt like I'm taking a test kind of thing, you know? So, it's, I just want the community, the parents, even students to know that there are so much thought went behind creating a calendar. This is the fourth year I'm serving, and I'm sure that three calendar, I didn't think much about it. And also, the importance of having a broad spectrum of committee members. And I heard that principals were talking about something like, oh, I can use that for the teachers and, you know, my staff kind of discussion. Some parents were saying, oh, maybe going early is a good thing. We could get started early. And, you know, of course, there are some discussions like that. And even students were saying certain thing about it. So, I just, I felt so good about being part of that discussion. And again, once again, I'm repeating, but there's a lot of thoughts went behind it. That's what our community did know that. But it was quite an experience. I really appreciate you all are working with me on that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. George, and thank you for serving on the committee for the board. We appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Next up is proposed TEA modified schedule, state assessment testing days for the school year in 1718. Do we have questions on this item from the trustees? Okay.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Me too. Okay, a proposed agreement between Fort Bend ISD, oh, yeah, this, we're going to pull item number four. I'm going to pull that from the agenda. It's 5B4. All right. Next up is C1. It's a proposed agreement between Fort Bend ISD and universities or school counselor programs for the purpose of placing the school counselors and intern students in Fort Bend ISD schools. Do we have questions on this item? All right. Next up is our administrators, who will serve as T-Test appraisers for the 1718 school year. Do you have questions on this item? All right. Next is our, how we intend to spend our HEB Excellence in Education Board of the Year Award winnings of $30,000. Do we have questions or additional comments or discussion by the board on this? Mrs. James?
Well, thank you for putting this together. I guess the administration, the Governance Committee put this together, so I appreciate you guys' work on that. And I really liked the three things suggested. I'm excited about exceptional governance. I've gone to several workshops at SLI and the TASB put on, and I think it's a very good program, so I'll be glad for the board to do it all together. I wanted to understand the leadership, about the leadership conferences a little bit better in the sense that I wanted to be sure that we were setting this up so that a variety of students and a range of students would be able to participate. Sometimes we have the same students applying for these leadership experiences, and it gets repeated. And when you got, in the write-up about this, it talks about the respective levels, which I think means elementary school, middle school, and high school. So, we wouldn't want the same kids to be going three times. And so, I just wondered if there had been any conversation about that or how we were going to address that.
Yes, and I do want, I want to, I'm glad you've asked that because one of the things that we were very intentional in our mindset is we understood when the board first discussed this, they wanted additional students to have opportunities, not just more opportunities for the same students. And so, that's very, we get that. At this point, though, I'm going to be honest, these are ideas, and we're going to have to build a whole framework around all of this. So, your point is well-taken, is that we build that framework that will have to be very intentional about what our, how our selection process looks and also the nomination, however it is, application, nomination, selection. But also, the piece I think we've struggled with, and frankly, because we haven't thought intentionally about it, is how do we track? How do we track which students at which high school has been invited? Because when we do things like our diversity conference, I'll talk to kids who say, oh, I've been every year since I've been in high school. Well, there's 2,000 kids at your high school. Why are you coming every year? When it's designed to touch a lot of different kids. So, we need to be more intentional about what those systems look like to track here at this building and how campuses are more organized and intentional about planning for that as well.
And I'll jump in as well. Mr. Rice and I discussed this at length during the committee meeting that we had on these as well, is that we wanted to not only make sure that new students were going to be tapped for these types of programs, but how many students were we going to be able to touch? So, one of the things I envisioned is when you guys do get it built out, is that it'll be brought back to the committee and presented to us so that we can then update the board on that as well and keep the board involved in that. So, that, I think that that's a good way to handle it and make sure that it is being developed kind of the way we expect it to be developed.
kind of the way we expect it to be developed.
I think the extension of that, Ms. Tosan, is that we would also engage the board in the opportunity, you know, we invite and encourage the board to attend if at all, you know, possible with the students.
Ms. Helger.
Okay. And I'll also, you know, as I'm sitting here thinking about it and thinking about master classes and stuff like that, you know, this is also opportunity for some of our executives that we have in our district and our area to come and talk with our students and let them, you know, touch them and see them and kind of hear their story on how they got where they, where they are today. And each one of them have a different story of their pathway. But, you know, I'm sure I could definitely get some people from, from my office to come and some others could as well. And I think part of the master class, even if it's, so you have certain things that will cost us, but having a, an assembly in a particular school for a certain grade level where they meet and talk to, you know, a Jim Rice or something like that, come in the office, I mean, come into the school, that should be incorporated with this whole program of leadership development. Yeah. So, yeah. So it shouldn't be limited to something that costs us something because there's other ways to leverage this whole plan for this leadership studio. Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. I got a couple of names right now. We'll say it right now. I mean, but I'm on the spot.
You are ready to volunteer them.
I've got seven names on my list.
Sure.
Anything else, Mrs. James?
Well, I just wanted to say that, that, just building on what you said, what actually both of you said, and that is, it seems like there's also a point here, and Mrs. Holger, you've said this before, about how we keep track of the profile of a graduate and kind of the checklist, whatever that looks like. And this seems like another thing that would be in that checklist. So if we're checking, you know, if they've had this type of experience, then that's kind of a checkbox in that profile of a graduate pathway. And then somehow that keeps it from being repeated because they've had that experience and, and they've, they've done that. And then they're, they're, they're moving on to the next thing. Because we don't want to just do this. We want all the kids to be doing this and increasing their experiences. So I think that, I like this framework. I think there's a lot here and I'll look forward to hearing how it develops. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Rosenthal, sorry.
Hi there.
I had already, I had already looked. There was no green light. I had to check the box.
One of the things I would like to see addressed in that leadership studio comes from what I observed last week at the graduate luncheon. The thing that, that came up over and over and over again were communication skills, the lack thereof. And so I think that would be something to really focus on. Because again, you know, for those, most of you guys were there, I think you heard the same thing. So, and I'm glad we recorded that. And I, and I think that, you know, for folks that weren't there, you need to, you know, spend a couple hours and watch that and listen to that because it was eye-opening. So.
That's good. Thank you for sharing that. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Next up are our proposed donations exceeding $10,000. We have three this month. Schlumberger donated $37,075 to the Fort Ben Education Foundation for the purchase of equipment for computer coding and robotics clubs at 54 campuses in Fort Ben ISD. That's incredible. Thanks to Schlumberger for that. Also, Region Five of Fairfax County Public Schools in Northern Virginia donated $12,319 to Juan Seguin Elementary School for the purchase of iPads and iPad carts for students. That's excellent. We appreciate that support coming off of Hurricane Harvey. So thanks to them for that. And then the Fort Ben Education Foundation donated $56,986 from community donations to the Harvey Relief Fund. The donation will go to the library fund at Juan Seguin Elementary. There was a lot of effort, I know from sitting and listening on that board, there's a lot of effort to get those funds together. And as always, we appreciate the Fort Ben Education Foundation for all their hard work and support. Do we have questions or comments from the board members on these items? Mr. Rice?
Madam President, may I suggest that we write a thank you letter and sign, have all the boards sign, especially, well, all of them really, but especially the folks in Virginia who sent us the money for Juan Seguin. And we could all sign it.
I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. Rice. Thank you for suggesting it. Anyone else? Mr. Burdine?
Madam President, I, I was about to say the same thing. I'd really like to, I'm sure we've thought about this, but something special. I'm still kind of stunned that, I understand it's Hurricane Harvey, but from Northern Virginia would send something like that down here. That's really big. So I think they deserve a big thank you.
Yep. I agree. If you guys will help us get something written up, thank you very much. Did you have something?
I'll just say even a video thank you.
Yeah.
A video thank you.
That would be nice.
Gangnam Style.
Mr. George?
I just have one question about the item number one, the Schlumberger donation. How do that money is distributed? Is this goes to different clubs or how, what is the criteria? How do, how do people, students get that benefited?
You know, that's, that's a really good question.
You're not on.
We'll, we'd need to do some follow-up. My, my guess is Schlumberger generally, when they give money, they target it specifically to schools. They don't just give us money and then we assign it out.
Okay.
Often the teachers are able to kind of make their request and it's coordinated. But let us do a follow-up and give you an appropriate answer for that.
The reason I ask that, I, I just noticed some schools are doing an exceptional job creating coding clubs. And I missed a meeting here. There was, some students came in and did some exceptional demonstration of their talent, you know, and, and I missed that meeting and I got an earful for that from my wife. So, so I just wanted to make sure it's been benefiting all across the district for, all across this, every student who, those who are interested in coding and all getting access to those money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Any other questions on these? All right. Thank you. I'm going to jump over so that Mr. Viasenior is here this evening. Thank you so much for being here. So I'm going to skip the bond package, the bond program, 2014 bond program items, and we'll take those up after closed session, but so that Mr. Viasenior does not have to wait through closed session. I'm going to jump a little bit here and go to item F two on review the proposed approval of an order authorizing issuance of Fort Ben ISD unlimited tax school building bonds in accordance with specified parameters as it's written there. Do we have questions by the board members on this item, F two?
Yes, Madam President, I do. This is, and I don't want to jump ahead, but I think we're doing three things here. I think, Mr. Bassett, we're issuing bonds, we're refunding bonds, and we're refunding some commercial papers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the, the other order is for the CTE Center.
And this is to get, to get the CTE Center going. And are we also, I know we've already started that. Are we going to, are we repaying ourselves for money that was?
So, so, so far, the general fund has lent, has spent $2 million on the CTE Center.
Okay.
Okay. And so, but once we do issue that debt, then the general fund would be paid back.
We'll refund it. Okay. All right. And I see that we're going to have possibly, these might be green bonds.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You'll just have to wait and see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James.
Yeah. So I have one just follow-up question from the CTE Center bonds. We have a bond order approved already that's out, that's out there. And this is in addition to, or this is a different one, or?
This will take the place of it. The, the original bond order was approved by the board in last February, in February of 2017 to last for a year. And so we're, we're trying to hold out as long as we can to issue that debt.
Sure.
And, and so we, we want to go after February. So in order to go after February, we have to, we have to bring the order back to you. We thought that we would be good within that year timeframe, but with, with the delays on the peers and other things like that, it was prudent to, to wait.
Yeah. Well, you never know. And it's better to have it in place than you can go forward if you need to.
Yes, ma'am.
But we're glad that you're saving us money by not borrowing it before you need it.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for, thank you for doing that. So, so this order basically supersedes the existing orders, what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. James. Any other questions on this item? Mr. Frails, thank you for being here this evening. We're, you're just up. We're, we're on your stuff and we're moving through quickly. Okay. Next is item F three, the proposed order authorizing issuance of Fort Ben ISD unlimited tax refunding bonds in more than one series. And then four, is it, well, let's, let's take three first. Are there questions on this item? The next item? Mr. Rice?
So in this item, if I'm reading this correctly, we are going to refund the outstanding commercial paper, retire the commercial paper debt, and issue new bonds that will be fixed rate. So tonight, we're not doing anything with variable rate bonds, is?
We're not, we're not anticipating that deal being, being variable rate.
Okay. So the commercial paper on, on this one's going to go away. And we're going to, then, in the next item, we're going to talk about issuing some new commercial paper.
Well, we're, we're in the middle of our commercial paper program in the, in our third tranche now. We have $40 million outstanding. And so we anticipate that reaching up to the 99, 100 million in the April-May timeframe. And then that's one we'll, that's one we'll refund, that's one we'll refund that.
Okay.
Just as we've done in the prior two times. And then we'll get started again, depending on, depending on our cash flow, on our cash flow needs.
Okay.
And so the, the next item itself isn't really a bond item.
Right.
It's making amendment to the Debt Service Fund. And so this is, this is just for the, the refunding of the commercial paper.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Viasenior a question. Mr. Senor, can you, can you please remind me how much money we have saved for Ben ISD to date by the issuance of commercial paper? Because I know it's millions of dollars.
We are, thank you, Mr. Rice. Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we are well north of $2 million. And we continue to issue commercial paper as there is a need to fund construction draws. Again, the beauty of this program is that you're borrowing the money when you need it as opposed to borrowing the money and then sometimes sitting on it for some period of time. So this has been very, very advantageous to the taxpayers of the school district. Now remember that when we pay down commercial paper, there is no other action required by the board for the staff to continue to use it as long as there is still authorized but unissued authority, right? That the voters would have granted the, the school board. And so typically for the first couple of transactions, there's not much worry. But as we get closer to that limit, my expectation is that we'll sit, sit down with the staff and decide whether we simply want to leave that commercial paper outstanding for a little bit longer period of time, right? Because that will have exhausted the voted authority.
And one more question, Mr. Viasenior. I, I may be getting this confused with the variable rate, but in our total bond portfolio, I think you told me that our threshold for variable rate should be not more than 20% of the total outstanding amount. Is that right?
That's correct. Although the rating agencies will typically allow you to go up to 25%. Now, we have had clients that have gone beyond that, but when we, if there's a need for doing that, what we do is we lay out a very clear financial plan to the rating agency so that they don't sort of penalize you for maybe exceeding it for one or two fiscal years. But there is no expectation that we're going to need that in the next, in the foreseeable future.
And, okay. Do you see, how do you, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but how do you see interest rates in the, the next 12 months?
Interestingly enough, since the beginning of the year, the yield curve has actually gotten flatter. And in fact, there, there is already some discussion about whether we might end up with an inverted yield curve. It's very unlikely that you would have an inverted yield curve given where inflation is today. But we're already starting to see short-term rates kind of ratchet up, not by 25 or 50 or 100 basis points, but by six or seven or eight basis points. The long end of the yield curve has stayed pretty much flat. And so what that typically allows us to do is to look at perhaps going out a little bit longer, right? So that we can sort of capture some of those long-term rates. There's not a real need for doing that today. I wish I could tell you where interest rates are going to be at the end of this calendar year, but as the year begins, interest rates are still looking very, very favorable.
Okay. And our short, our variable rate percentage, do you recall what percent?
I think, Steve, it's like eight, 16, 17, 18%?
Yeah. That's where we're at now. And our policy, the, the policy that our board has adopted, we have a 25% threshold. But, but we're in that, we're in that range now.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Viasenior. Thank you for driving in from San Antonio.
Thank you for accommodating.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you for being here. Do we have other questions from the board members?
Yeah, just to have a follow-up on that. That was my question, actually. And just one follow-up question on that. So when we talk about saving 2 million plus dollars in interest, what kind of principal amount are you talking about? You know, like how much we issued in commercial papers?
Well, so we've gone through, I guess, about two and a half, two and a half times of our, of our program. So it's 250 million or 240 million, I guess, is what we've issued in commercial paper now.
Sure.
And so, you know, it seems like for, you know, about every 100 million, we're saving a million in, in interest expenses.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. I just was trying to clarify. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have one more question, Madam President, and it's from Mr. Frails. Mr. Frails, have you had an opportunity to review the paperwork for these instruments? Yeah.
Mr. Rice, Madam President, members of the board, thank you for having me. I apologize for the traffic on 59 on the way, on the way out from downtown today. Yes, I, I did have an opportunity to review both of these. We in fact prepared both of these orders. We are very comfortable with the orders and the information that's contained in them and are, are ready to go when you are.
Thank you very much. I always sleep better at night knowing you've reviewed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and for fighting the traffic to get here. We understand. Okay. Are there other questions by the trustees? Okay. And then next up, number four is the adjustment of the adopted budget to reflect the impact of the commercial paper refunding and the prior year's bond refunding. Do we have questions on this item? Okay. With the trustees' permission, we don't have very many items left. We can keep plowing through and then just take our closed session at the end if everybody's okay with that. And then Mr. Signs is here, I see, so we can let everybody go. Okay. Thank you both for being here. We appreciate it. So we'll go back to F one A and look at Bond Program Bid Package 28, which is multi-campus renovations. Do we have questions? The trustees have questions on this item? Thank you. Yes, Mrs. James?
I have a question, Ms. Tosan. I didn't see where the, the bidders or the bid evaluations were listed in the item.
Yes, ma'am. We inadvertently left those out. They're at your table right now and they will be there before y'all take action in two weeks.
Okay. I saw this, but it, it said, it says something about roofing replacement. Is that a just, maybe just look at it to see if it's the right one, but yes, we'd like to, I'd like, that's the right one. Thank you.
If we could send that out in an update, that would be helpful, just to draw the trustees' attention to it. And then, let's do it in an email so that we have it directly.
We will do that, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions on this item? Yes, no? Ms. Heliger?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So how do we get, um, the point fours? Is it because, how, how are we calculating these numbers? How do we get these numbers? Like a point four? And is it, is it because you all are doing a point zero? Is the, is the scale a point zero five, a point five? How are you getting a point four on a, on a scale like this? I, I don't understand.
I'd like to call on Ms. Eisenberg to come and answer that, please.
Thank you for being here.
Just kind of from a high, from a high-level standpoint, I mean, if you've got a five-point scale, because, you know, I've had challenges before how we, we've done this. So if you've got a five-point scale or 40-point scale, there's a series of questions within the scale that you are giving someone a point to, right?
Correct. We've got formulas built into each question for that final score to come out for that, that section of the rubric. So we could share that with you if you need us to?
I, I'm just curious. I just don't know how you get on a five-point scale, how you get a point four? How you get a point?
They're averaging, I think they're averaging multiple people's scores, too.
I, I get, I understand that it's average, however, if you only got, if you got a one, I, I guess, maybe it is. Maybe I just, the person must score so low that...
I can go back and take a look and then address it specifically if you'd like in the update when we send the rubric.
Okay. And how many people were a part of this process, the scoring?
There are several people involved in the, the bid package scoring. So we've got, um, typically two from our DNC team, two from our purchasing team, um, two from Jacobs, and then we also are involving our architects.
And what was the last one?
Jacobs.
You said architects. Two architects.
And we also have, are, are there two additional program managers? I'm sorry, I'm still learning this myself.
So we've got 10 people that normally, um...
Correct.
How many are Fort Bend ISD?
So, right, because the first one, you said two from your office, is that what you said?
Correct.
And then, um, two from purchasing, two from Jacobs, two from architecture, and two from the program managers. And there are those program managers, Fort Bend ISD program managers?
Fort Bend.
They're not, they're, okay, no. So we're looking at six, six to four, a six to four ratio.
Ms., did you want to add something that? We'll let you come to the microphone. You don't have to use sign language across the room.
Good evening.
Are you on?
Good evening. Um, so we have two people per category. We have seven categories, and so it includes, um, when we evaluate on the bid evaluation, we have two people evaluating each category. So if we talk about two architects, two people from procurement, SBE for the small business, we've got people from DNC. And so total, we're talking over 14 people looking at this?
Correct. I left off safety and risk. I apologize.
Carolina, because the board has asked before about what Jacobs is doing versus Fort Bend staffs, so it might be good to point out which categories Jacobs does on here.
And so, um, Jacobs, um, participates in one section for the schedule, project schedule. Um, so purchase price, we have procurement evaluated in both categories and purchase. Contractors prior experience, we have, um, Fort Bend ISD and the architect. Um, quality of contractors, goods and services, we have Fort Bend ISD and the architect. Um, contractor's safety record, we have one person from Jacobs, which is the, their safety person, which evaluates one side of the, of the safety, and the other safety person is Fort Bend ISD. Uh, proposed personnel, we have DNC and the architect. Uh, project plan and schedule, we have both from the DNC team on that category. Uh, past experience with Fort Bend ISD and other school districts, that's Fort Bend ISD employees, uh, from DNC. Uh, financial stability and bond capacity, that's, uh, business and finance, uh, both, both people from business and finance there. And then SBE, uh, we've got, um, our Fort Bend ISD employee on that category.
And what was the one for quality of contractors?
Quality of contractors, response, we've got, um, the architect and Fort Bend ISD.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying. Any other questions from the trustees? All right. Next up is the amendments to the approved project budget, uh, on the administrative building construction project. Do we have questions on this item? Mrs. James?
I was trying to, I, I need a little help understanding it. Could you help me?
Yes, ma'am. So, in this particular one, what, what occurred is we came to y'all with a, a budget that, uh, the board approved back in, in January of 2017. And then, uh, within that budget amount that we brought to you, we now need to go ahead and move some money within the, the project budget. So we're not asking for additional money. It's within there, but because of CV local, we have to come back to the board to, to allow that movement. So that's what we're, we're asking for. And the reason that we did that is because in order to go ahead and, uh, work the asbestos abatement part of the project more efficiently, we went ahead and, and put that in with the contractor so that they could run it. And for that reason, we're needing to go ahead and make those adjustments.
So you're not asking for more money, you're asking to move money within the budget? Is that what you're saying?
Okay. And the, the asbestos abatement was in administrative and other project costs or in the category of other project costs bef, in, before?
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, next up are amendments to the previously approved project budget for the renovations at Barrington Place, Armstrong, Austin Parkway Elementary, Colony Meadows, and Glover. Um, and the use of the program contingency in the amount of $282,765 to increase the A&E design fee, uh, for each of those projects. Do we have questions on this item? Okay. And then finally, transfer of funds from identified savings into the 2014 bond program contingency. Questions on this item? Mrs. James?
Okay, so on this one, um, I guess, it's not so much a question. I think I understand the, um, the math here and the pluses and minuses from all the products that we have before us tonight. I guess I just wanted to bring up something I've asked about in a couple of different, um, requests for information and brought up before, and that is that, um, because I sent this question in earlier today about the, the amount of money that's currently in our cumulative program contingency that comes from the major projects, um, that we, uh, have chosen not to do. Um, so, Mr. Prus, could you just mention what that amount is and what those, what those projects are?
Yes, ma'am. There, there's three projects, and those are Sugar Mill Elementary School, those are the, they're the classroom additions, Sugar Mill Elementary School, First Colony Middle School, and Palmer Elementary. And the, the reason for not doing that is that when we did the updated facilities master plan back in September 2015, the forecasted lower enrollment created through the feeder pattern alignment, uh, process and the approved attendance band, boundaries eliminated the need for these. And those three totaled, uh, $5,755,200. And so that money was transferred in.
Okay. So thank you for, thank you for clearing that. So it's about 5.7 million of that is, um, comes from those three, uh, projects. And I recognize that that's come to us, um, kind of piecemeal, from what I remember you telling me. It's come at different times before us. And I, it, it just kind of all culminated for me, I guess, a few, couple of weeks ago, and I realized we have, we don't maybe have a good process in place for, I, for the board to weigh in or identify or discuss when we choose to do a project or not to do a project like that. And I'm not talking about a smaller thing like a, a roof or replacing an HVAC system or something where you've, you're kind of managing that in your facilities. I guess, to me, when we're talking about these larger projects, yes, we get the PASA data presented to us and, but we're not really voting on that. And we don't have a, a mechanism, I guess, that's, that the board is weighing in on about how to use this, this money that's been approved in the referendum. So I guess I would say, I just want to be sure that our, all of our processes are transparent so that we're not, um, surprised by, um, by these issues, uh, when we see additional PASA data or, or, you know, with the decisions have been made, and then we're wondering what happened to that money that the voters approved for the particular addition. So just wondered if any of that's been given any consideration or how we could improve our process in the future.
Well, I would tell you, I would, I'm trying to think of the right word to say. I guess my response to what you've just said is I think the board actually has excellent procedures in place, because these decisions were made when the board approved the update to the master facilities plan back in 2015. And so that's when we determined we would not need those, and then determined we would then move the funds into program contingency. Um, in regard to spending program contingency, of course, the board at any time could say, we would like to see you use this for a particular project. But I think the intent, the intent of the resolution the board approved around that was that we would complete the bond program, and then when that money, the, the final end pot is available, then we would bring it to the board and say, how, how would you like us to spend this? Here's a list of needs, here's maybe our recommendation. But ultimately, the board full, holds the full hand on that at that time. But again, I would say if the board believes at any time, there, I wouldn't recommend it, let me be clear. But if at any time the board says, well, there's 4 million from this project we didn't do, we would like to see you do this now, that's the board's prerogative at any time. But I think that doing that would risk cutting us close on the bond program in a way that I think would also in the end make the board uncomfortable. So I do, I think the board has put great policies. I think you've got good things in place to manage this. I think because they come, at, you know, you approve this now, and then you approve this here, then you approve this later, sometimes it doesn't feel like it's in concert or necessarily tied together. But if you look at the history, I think the board has taken appropriate actions over time to address all of these things.
Okay. I, I guess, um, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not, I'm just saying that it's taken, it took me about two years to figure out this situation or that 5.7 or 8 million dollars. So for some, and perhaps that was just me that missed it, but I'm, I'm concerned that maybe in the way the process worked, we didn't, it didn't, we didn't, I didn't quite understand it, and maybe the rest, the rest didn't either. So I, I don't know. I, I agree that it's fine, and we're having this conversation, so we're clear that it's the, those three additions. I guess, it, and I understand that to use the money differently, it has to go into the program contingency. I'd just like to, as we go into the next round of this, I'd just like to figure out how, that what process could we have to, to make it really very clear to the community and to, to all of us, what, what, what we're doing and what we're not doing. That would just be my request.
Mr. Rice?
Well, uh, Dr. Dupree, I would, I would like to say I agree with Mrs. James on that. And, uh, I think what we should do is, if we get PASA data, if we're going to approve PASA data to the extent that it is possible, and, and you choose not to do a, a project because new information has arisen, which obviates the need for that, then that should be, uh, identified at that time as a possible corresponding, uh, transfer of funds to the contingency. Because what you said is correct. These things happen over an extended period of time, and it's very difficult to keep the thread of knowledge of all of that stuff. And so I'm perfectly fine with, uh, not doing a project when the need no longer is there for the project and having that money go into contingency. And I don't think Mrs. James is saying that the board is going to decide how to spend the money. I think the board, uh, all of us have learned a lesson in this current bond program, because the board instructed the administration to increase the size of all the, the public spaces in the new schools to accommodate 1,000 students instead of maybe 750 or 800. That increased the size, that increased the cost, and we've been wrestling with that. So we should not do that in the future unless we're willing to come up with more money. And thus, I don't think that we're going to, I don't think the board really should be directing the administration on how to spend the money, because the administration has to have room to maneuver to complete these projects and get them buttoned up. But I do think Mrs. James' point on how we keep track of that and how we apprise the board is well, uh, well-taken, and that as we go forward, if we can identify that, if we're not going to do these projects, simply say at that time, we're not going to do this because the PASA data has obviated the need for that, and we're going to transfer, we're recommending that we transfer these funds back into contingency. Um, but, uh, Mrs. James, I think your point was well-made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal?
I would, I would agree with what Mr. Rice said, uh, because I've, I've kind of forgotten where these monies came from as well. Um, so I think that would be a good step. We're all on board. We all know where it comes from. Uh, everybody knows what's happening. It's very clear to everyone. Um, I think our policies are, that are in place are good, uh, as far as putting that money back into contingency and not spending it on, you know, crazy things without, you know, you know, board approval. Um, but, and I also agree that, that that's your job to come up with, you know, projects that, that are needed or necessary, not, not really ours, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. So it sounds to me like the board is asking more for, uh, clarity on reporting and on process, not so, I think we all agree that our policy is sound and that, and I think we all agree that it's for the administration to make recommendations to us, but maybe just to help us, um, better understand the changes that you guys are recommending and make that connection maybe earlier on would help us, um, as we're absorbing this information, and maybe help us when we get questions from the community as well, because that does happen, so. Okay, thank you. Mrs. James?
And can I add one other thing? Because as we're going forward into the, planning for the next bond, I think the other piece of this is the resolution that we had in place when we passed the referendum as a board also was, to me, um, a, a, a good constraint on, uh, and, but I don't know if it needs to be in the resolu, it needs to be as a resolution. Maybe it does, because it's for the life of the bond program itself, um, or in a policy. But still, I think that that, that's a, that's another piece that has, um, helped, I think, uh, to maintain accountability to the community.
Thank you. Okay, next up are our purchases exceeding $50,000. And first up, we have batteries for buses and cars and such. Do we have questions on the, on the batteries? Mrs. James?
Well, I just sent, uh, a question in on this one, because it looked like we increased our, we were planning to increase our spending quite a bit. And I know we're in a budget tightening, uh, mode, uh, so this one and maybe even a couple of other, of the others of the purchasing, it appeared we were increasing, or in this case, almost doubling our spending. So I was looking for some explanation of that.
So what, uh, Ms. James, um, what we're, what we're doing here for a five-year, for a five-year item is building in growth, you know, because we will be adding to our fleet in the future, and then also to have some for contingency, so we don't have to necessarily come back to the board, you know, for, for approval. Uh, I mean, I, I certainly hope we don't spend a quarter million dollars on batteries over five years. Um, but, uh, but, but that was, that's our rationale for the, for the, uh, for those amounts.
Unless we're moving to an electric fleet. I agree. So thank you. So thank you. So I just, but I just wanted to bring that up because.
Sure.
Every, every department is being asked to look at how we're going to cut money, you know, how we're going to save money. And so this seemed to be in the other direction, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Burdine?
Would it be safe to say in the past that we've not kept up well with our batteries and things of this sort? Or was there a replacement plan or just kind of as needed or?
There, there has always been a replacement plan. But what we have, you know, some of these buses take two batteries, older ones, and newer buses take three batteries. And, and, you know, and as we're adding fleet, we just, you know, feel that there's going to be some additional expenditure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez and Mr. Basset. Next up are HVAC equipment, supplies, services, controls, and related items for our five-year period. Do we have questions on this item? Okay. Building, maintenance, repair, and operations supplies and equipment, also for a five-year period. Do we have questions on this item? All right, item 5D, our electrical contractor services for a five-year period, including optional equipment and parts from the vendors. Do we have questions on this item? Mr. Rice?
Mr. Perez, I would just like to know if, perhaps for Ms. Fizetti as well, are new specifications aligned with procuring the same types of lamps, replacement lamps to go into the light fixtures and things like that?
Yes, sir. We're, we're trying to make sure because we still have some holes, and we're getting all of that tightened up so that we're not just buying all over the place.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. And finally, we have lighting products for a five-year period from the vendors in the list. Do we have questions on this item? Mrs. James?
My question isn't particularly towards this item, but it relates to the last three or four. And that has to do with the vendor selection for all these vendors. And I just wanted to understand how we were including or could be including local businesses as being potential vendors for these items.
We don't have a specific program for the, on the small business and the local for the, you know, some of the, some of the other areas. But these are all for, for the sake of efficiency. These are all co-op vendors that, or co-op programs that we go through. And this is more of just putting down qualifications, and we can use all of the qualified vendors through there. It's not necessarily done to eliminate this vendor or that vendor, you know, for the sake of efficiency. If there's a local vendor that does, is able to provide these kinds of services, we're, we're hoping that they, you know, look to the co-ops because that's one of the main ways that the, that not just, you know, Fort Bend ISD, but most of the other governmental entities do purchases of this, of this nature.
Okay, so do we still do some business fares or anything like that with the local vendors to talk to them about how to do business with Fort Bend ISD?
Yes, ma'am. We still have that program.
Okay, and so this would be something we might include in that about having, having them? These are the, these are the buy boards or the co-ops that we're using? And if you're interested, that you could sign up? So is that something we include now in our?
Sure, that's something that we could, that we can add. I, I need to check with, with Jeanette to see if that's something that she has been doing, but I could certainly see us doing that, though. That's a great suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Burdine?
A real quick question about that. So when we're purchasing these items, is it just purely done by price or is there some type of consideration for service as well?
Yes, sir. Both are taken into account. And this, one of the main reasons that we were looking at going in this manner is because, you know, because of Harvey, we saw what we could do whenever we had multiple vendors and weren't tied just to one vendor, you know, how much could be done quicker and also more efficient. And so that was one of the main reasons that I reached out to procurement to see, okay, can we do this? Because it, it'll just help us when we have these multiple vendors that we can go to, and we would get quotes and then make sure we go with the best value.
Does that create a culture of competition, so to speak? Do we benefit from that?
Yes, sir. The, the co-op pricing is, is already pretty much set.
Negotiated.
But it, it does, because it's competitive bid to the co-op, and then we, we go in there, we know what that pricing is ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. All right, since we are not going to have any action on closed session items tonight, I'm going to go ahead and open up for audience response to the agenda review items. Do we have any audience response this evening? Okay, then we are going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of a private consultation with the Board's attorney on any or all matters authorized by law. We are now convening closed session. Right after closed session, we get to go home. I'll step out and take a motion to adjourn, and then we'll adjourn.